All right, I think we'll call the meeting to order. It's six o'clock on September 4th and Janet is not available this evening, so I'll be chairing the meeting tonight. Welcome, everyone. We're here to talk about attendance area discussion, so let's go right into the operations report.
All right.
Take it away.
Sure. Well, I don't know how much or how little, and I'll just kind of leave that up to you guys, but how I approached this was I asked your operational directors to do a little brainstorming. And they said, okay, if we're going to pair some schools, what issues do you see in your particular area of responsibilities that could crop up as a result of this pairing concept? And I thought we got back a pretty good list of brainstorming ideas. Whether they're relevant to your discussion or not, that's for you to decide, but we kind of blended the finances and operations together. And so I'll just go through some of these things rather quickly, try to expand on some of the things that we put in here, so you have an understanding of kind of what they mean. So if you turn to that first page where it says higher FRL drives funding, one of the things that I'd really want to point out to you is that so many things in our funding stream are based on poverty. They truly are. And depending on the poverty level of the population you're talking about, on whether or not you have additional resources available to you, because we're in competition nationwide for these federal and sometimes state dollars that flow through the state. And it's based on that poverty calculation. For instance, Title I, it's calculated by the number of children in poverty district wide. Then when it gets down to the programming, that's where the individual schools come in to play. And we provide programming based on those building needs. And a lot of times, we take our higher FRL school population and we provide more Title I services. Now, that's not necessarily how you have to do it, but will Title I be impacted overall as far as the funding stream? Probably, in my mind, very little, because our total number of students are going to stay the same, but how we allocate it in-house will change, more than likely, if a pairing occurs and we're able to reduce FRL rates at particular buildings that are higher now and are used to getting higher levels of those types of categorical funds. For instance, a higher FRL building could have one FTE Title I assistance from a teacher. Well, if we reduce that, if we reduce that population as far as the free and reduced, maybe that would only qualify for a halftime teacher. So then that teacher gets to travel somewhere else and might create a few inefficiencies because of loss of instructional time and things like that that you have to factor in to your thinking. There are some, there are some programs such as CEP, the Community Eligibility Program that Tate has been under for the last several years. And what's nice about the CEP is that you can claim a building as a completely free meal building, and those meals are available to everyone, okay? And you don't even have to fill out an application, which is nice for a school like Tate, where your population is a little bit more transient, I would say, or a little bit more of a challenge to get to fill out the paperwork, honestly, when you, when you get into Tate. And so Ann Browning has been great to work with. We made Tate a CEP eligible five years ago, and it's on a four-year cycle. But this year, when we went to renew, Tate's population dropped below 60%, and that's the threshold. And so it no longer was eligible for CEP. So all of those kids that were used to being able to get that breakfast meal in the morning and so forth are no longer eligible under a CEP program. Now, we did work with Tate to convert that building to a universal meal program, but then that requires an application process. So Ann was really good about helping us work through the application and things like that. And I think we're targeting the children that have most need, and I feel good about that. But just something like that to consider when, when you drop FRL numbers, things like that happen. And so kids who are used to getting services no longer receive those types of services or those benefits. Twain, for instance, Twain, Hills, and Wood all have what I call an at-risk grant, and it's all based on their FRL numbers. And that's roughly $100,000 a year. Would they qualify for that if the population of the free and reduced were to drop in those buildings? No, because it's based on FRL, their FRL status. The Fresh Fruits and Vegetable Program, we were able to have five schools, Alexander, Wood, Hills, Kirkwood, and Twain, on the Fresh Fruits and Vegetable Program this year. In prior years, we were able to have Lucas, but Lucas dropped below the FRL threshold and did not, and were, again, not eligible for that service. And so those children that were used to getting that snack in the middle of the morning that really boosted their, their learning and, and energy levels, were no longer able to get that. We simply, that resource dried up because of the change in the FRL. So just, just know that things like that happen in our funding stream as you change FRL populations in our buildings.
Craig, one quick question. Is Tate the only CEP building that received the lunch and breakfast without the application?
Right. That was the only one, and now we don't have any.
Right.
Can I ask, where does that money come from, the CEP money?
That comes directly from the nutrition program. What we do is, we, under a CEP, we're able to claim all of the free and reduced, the building population is free and reduced, so we're able to get our federal and state reimbursement for that. But we actually pay for the full-price lunches of the kids who don't qualify actually for free and reduced.
So is that extra federal money that comes in, then?
It's, it's the same reimbursement process that we get for any other free and reduced student that we claim. It's, it's the same money.
You just get it for every kid in the building?
What happened, actually, and the reason why Tate actually missed out, is because the SNAP program nationwide has been underfunded. The Trump administration has reduced funding to the USDA. USDA chose not to put money into the SNAP program, and as a, as a result, it, it, there was a considerable number, millions nationwide, that lost that type of funding. And so that's where that source of money came from that you're asking about, that that's the conduit through the USDA.
Okay. Todd?
But that's all into the nutrition fund, if you got the general fund.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that stays within the nutrition fund. That's a good point, Leslie.
So you keep saying by building, right? So is it, if we're imperative schools, is it by building? See what I'm saying? Like, at one time, it'd be more kids from, you know, the numbers would be different. It could be different for FRL two buildings.
It could.
Are you talking one pairing or each?
Like, like, for instance, I started out and said Title I is based off of our entire student population, FRL population district-wide, okay? Some of these other grants are specific to a building. And like, we applied for Lucas and didn't get that because their FRL numbers dropped below their threshold. And so it really depends on who's issuing the money or what the grant, how you apply for the grant.
I think your question, Paul, might be better answered by the idea of who is at the school, which I think is what you're asking. And that's the students that are enrolled as part of the official count that comes in on October 1st.
Right.
And so if that school is K-2 or 36, it's the kids that are in that school when we do the count, and whether they are registered as eligible for free and reduced lunch.
In the building, but not the attendance area?
Not, it's not the attendance area. It's the kids that are actually enrolled in that building on October 1st when we do the certification.
Right. And when, when they talk building, it's one physical address, or if we were to say that Man and Shimmick is now Man-Shim, and they just have two campuses, and all the students go, and that is that one facility, even though it has shared areas, would they consider that, or it's, it's the physical address of this and the physical address of that?
Nope. It's the kids that are at the school and are registered as students at that school on October 1st.
Right. But if we were to say that the kids in this school, Man-Shim, is that whole population?
They still wouldn't be the kids that are at that school, so they want to know who's sitting in the desks at that school.
Okay, so it's a physical address?
Yeah.
Well, and, and to add to that, how the Department of Education nationally determines that is that every child is issued a state ID number. And then every child is attached to that the building ID number that they're attending for enrollment purposes. So you would have to create a whole new school called Man-Shim and give it a state ID number in order for us to call that a building, but I'm not sure they would allow it.
I don't, I don't know if they would, because they, they would do that if you have two buildings on a campus. So if we built
Right.
A seventh-grade building out here on the corner and said it's part of this campus, they'd probably green-light that. But I think if you have two separate remote physical addresses and tried to call it one school, I'm not sure they would give us one number for that.
Steve, we ran into that with TREC, with the nutrition program. They required us
We had to have separate numbers for that.
For that it was a separate building.
Right.
Even though all of the lunches were served out of West High.
Yeah.
So that answers.
Goes to that question.
All the kids, yeah, all the kids at TREC actually belong to a
A different school.
A home, a home school, technically. But, but they're assigned, when, when they moved to TREC, they're assigned to TREC. And so for, for the DE purposes, we had to give them that TREC number. So that's where they were attending.
Okay.
So then your example, like college community, they're having that.
Oh, all the buildings on one campus, Prairie?
Even there, they have to have separate numbers for them, because the DE will look at it on a case-by-case basis. And if you were to build a seventh-grade building out here, they'd say, oh, yeah, it's part of your seventh-grade campus. But college community, by building separate schools, assigning different kids to those schools, they're going to assign them all different numbers.
The final thing on that page is just, would it impact, you know, the weighted resource allocation model? I believe there's some, some conversation that we would have to have around that. As you know, if you dig into the weighted resource allocation model, one of the factors that go into weighting the resources is FRL. And so as you change those numbers, those, those weightings would all change. And how much, I don't know, you know, that would just have to go through that formula process. But it, it would change that allocation to some degree. Now, there are other factors, you know, enrollment and all the other things that we consider as far as the factors that go in there, but FRL is one, one of those factors, so. We won't spend much time on the budget, because it's really kind of a downer, but we'll move on to student transportation. Some of the things that came up as we were talking about, a discussion on student transportation, and I thought this, these were worthy of discussion, and Lori followed up with a question, actually, last week on, on kind of this very first one, where you might have a, in a paired school arrangement, you might, your house might be eligible for school-provided busing for one child, but not the other child, right? And how does that work with the psyche of the parents, and how does that, that work all, all, all through, all of those kind of things? You know, one might be required to walk, one might be eligible to ride, they most, they might both choose to walk, you know? There's a lot of different configurations as, as we looked through that, that could end up. But just something for you to put in the back of your mind under a paired school arrangement that there could be more of that. And if, if that were the case, in some of your younger school grades for a building, if you have a bus where you're transporting those younger kids, is there going to be a need for more monitors on a bus like that? I don't know, to, to manage, you know, that inexperience as those kids get on the bus? Would there be attendance support considerations, probably, as you think through that and as you work through that? Maybe a child would, one of the children in a family would be eligible, maybe another one wouldn't, for, to want to take advantage of something like that. Or maybe if your child had to walk, you want to go to a pay-to-ride application for one child, and that would increase a bus demand for pay-to-ride, all those kinds of things. So one of the final things on that particular page was, you know, our bell times are structured so that we're able to tier 80% of our routes right now, and that creates some great efficiencies for us. Would that be the case under a paired school arrangement? I, I have no idea. You'd have to give me a specific example. We'd have to figure, try to figure it all out as far as would, would we be able to do that with our current bell times, or would we have to adjust bell times, or, or would we have to adjust number of routes and those kind of things? So good ideas that came up, you know, food for thought in this whole area. On the second page, the student transportation, it was brought up, you know, given the number of parents who choose to drive their kids to school, it may increase the number of cars at a particular building. I know some parents don't like their youngsters walking to school. I mean, the really young ones, the kindergarten or first and second graders, they, they would rather take them to school. I don't blame them. Well, if you have nothing but kindergarten, first and second graders at a school, is that going to increase the number of cars being circulating around that campus? And as such, when you have back-to-school night and when you have those types of events, what, what does that, what does that look like for, for a situation like that, for those types of events? So I, I just wanted to also plant those kind of things in your thinking as you're discussing the paired school concept. Let's talk about facilities. One
So there's just one question on transportation.
Sure.
So we had talked about before, I don't know if you've been in on this conversation, if you take, let's just use Twain and Longfellow. If you are currently in the Longfellow zone, or currently live in Twain's zone, we talked about that's your home campus, so you dropped off, picked up there, you had to go to the other one, you transport there, is that something that you guys have looked at, usability that happens?
Well, we actually don't pick up at the, per se, at the buildings, right? They're, they're all stops located with strategically around the attendance zone, where we can gather the kids and bring them in to that attendance center. And so we could have a concept where we would have a stop at a building, right? And you could drop off kids, and kids could stay on a bus, and then they could be transported to another building, which would be a drop-off point or something like that. All those things are possible. But no, we haven't gone through any kind of scenarios where, where we would do that. You can also have, and I know this district has done this in the past with mixed success, and that is a central transfer point, where it's very efficient for us to send a bus out into the farther regions of our district, bring them back to a central transport point, have them get off the bus and get on the bus that's going actually to their school, and then take those buses to the school. And if you do that on a K-12 basis, it becomes extremely efficient. That's what most all your rural schools do. But it's not an urban model. An urban model typically is keeping elementary separated from secondary kids, and so we haven't chosen to do that. And then the central transfer point, we had some problems with kids escaping on us and the supervision, and things like that weren't, weren't real good. But, you know, all those things are possible. They truly are. It's just a matter of how you, what kind of idea you come up with and how you want to configure that.
Craig, at what point, when you get more and more specific, do you have to then go out to Durham for them to run maps?
I would have to give them fairly specific parameters
Okay.
in order for them to put into their routing model, okay, we want these buildings paired together, and we want it to look like this within these times, and et cetera. And they, they would be able to do that. There's a cost to that. It runs about $15,000 every, every scenario you run, at least it has.
So we would like to have all of our ducks in a row?
It would be good that you wouldn't want to run a lot of extraneous, you know, iterations, but if you have something specific in mind, we can certainly vet it.
Although, I, I want to just add to that, when we were doing the bell schedule, we brought them to the table, and they were part of the conversation. So they, even though we weren't giving them the specific route, we were saying to them, how would this work if we did this? And they helped us sort of figure that out. And then it wasn't until we got to the final iteration
Right.
that they actually did the route.
Well, I think, and that would be good, especially if we're talking about maybe staggering start times and that sort of thing, or drop-off points, is to have them involved at that level.
They live in that world, and it was really great to have them at the table when we were doing the bells. So if, if you get to that point in your conversations and you have specific transportation issues, it'd be great to pull them in and just pick their brain on that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Moving on to facilities, one of the things that came up right away are your fire codes, your multi-level buildings. You wouldn't be able to put your preschool, your first, your second graders on a second floor. That's not allowed in Iowa. And so, you know, that would, that would really restrict your, your space availability in some of our buildings, especially some of our older buildings that are currently multi-story buildings. And so that's just something to keep in the back of your mind. Our preschool classrooms typically run about 1,050 to 1,100 square feet, sometimes even 1,200 square feet. Those are great preschool kindergarten-type rooms because of all the floor activity, but our regular classroom would run between 900 and 1,000 square feet. And so pairing a building where you would have just all grade alike, like all third, fourth, or, or fourth, fifth, and sixth graders in a building, you would probably be underutilizing some space or overutilizing some space. So just something also, in our smaller kids' classrooms, of course, we have smaller fixtures. Some of those wouldn't be appropriate if you were to adjust smart boards, distance from the floor, writing on all those kind of things would be a consideration, some things that I hadn't even thought about. Building capacity would change. That'd be fun, trying to explain that, given how much fun we had trying to explain it the first time around. But desks and chairs are all sized accordingly and would need to be adjusted, counter heights, and even play equipment. And I think you even got a letter or a comment today from a, from a patron that brought this issue up on, you know, at Longfellow, we're putting in a K-6 grade-appropriate play structure in different areas, and if it becomes a 4, 5, 6, what do you do with the, the pre-K, you know, smaller areas, et cetera? And what is that, how does that look? Before and after-school programming in a paired building, I imagine would put a lot of pressure on the, on the younger grade-level buildings and less pressure on the others. Gym space for our community groups, mission partners, that came up. I don't have an opinion on that. I don't know whether that would be affected or not, but. Mealtime allocations, our, our younger kids simply don't eat as quickly as our older kids. Our older kids learn to scarf their food down and, and taste it later. Our, our young kids still enjoy the experience, and so they usually take longer. And so without the balance of the older kids to speed up the lunch period, you might run into some time allocation pieces that you would want to think about. The universal breakfast, again, based on FRL numbers and how all of those shook themselves out, right? I just wanted to make sure we brought that up. Would it be or wouldn't it be? And then summer feeding programs are not financially feasible for us when the FRL percentages are below 50%, because we get, we don't get enough reimbursement to pay for the labor and the food that, that go into providing those programs. And then finally, as we talk about some miscellaneous considerations here, how do you handle conference days and back-to-school nights? And parents being in two buildings at one time, would they want to participate in both PTOs? And what would that look like? And then would transportation, again, crop up as a barrier to attendance for some of our kids in a paired arrangement? I don't know, I don't know the answer to these questions. I just raise them more as questions than, than answers, but just something for you to put in your
Well, can you give me one question? Wouldn't you just have, the paired schools have one DPO, and it would be the same, and it would just be two buildings, and you have one committee?
Maybe so.
You'd have a greater opportunity to have participation, because you have a couple of families involved?
Maybe so.
And that, and that type of a thing? So I don't know that I see that as a, as a complete
I didn't consider it as, as a negative, per se. I just, just something to think about.
Oh, absolutely.
And so, yeah, if you configured it that way, that might be even a benefit.
Well, I tell you, with your presentation, everything's very good. You brought up a lot of things. And one thing that kind of comes through this is that there's an economic benefit to poverty or to, to that. And is there a sweet spot to get the most economic assistance and yet not be so overburdening on the staff in a particular building? It's, it seems to me, and what you're, what you're bringing before us is, is that you can easily lose a lot of benefits if you go too low. And, you know, is, is there a magic number from a funding source that you say, okay, if we, if, if it's 60, and if we can hit it right at 60 and get that benefit? I don't know. That's my question.
Yeah, you know, that's a, that's a great question. And just off the top of my head, I'll give you a couple of thoughts. Like the, the Community Eligibility Program, 60% is your threshold for a program like that. The Fresh Fruits and Vegetables, based there, there's off of 50% FRL. It's right in their cover letter. You have, if you have 50% or more, you can apply. If it's 50%, if it's less than 50%, don't bother applying.
And Craig, where's that money come from?
The Fresh Fruits and Vegetables program, I believe, is a federal flow-through from the USDA.
And that one's still funded?
It's what?
Federal.
Yes, federal.
And it's school-based, building-based?
It's school-based, based on the building population, and it's a 50% threshold.
Okay.
Title I, is it 35%?
Yeah.
Title I's 35%. I can't give you one number, one sweet spot.
Right. And so, and, and when, when you're looking at Tate, well, that's secondary level anyway, and that. And if it was the type of a thing, if we're just one student away, you know, if you recruit, I don't know. But it's just when we're, when we're looking at, if, at an, in a, in a elementary building, if there's a certain number that works best, and then when we get to the secondary level, if there's something, that, that, if, if we know what it is and we're toward that, or, or, you know, trying to, you know, since, since we're looking to, when we have more resource, when we have more funding, we can do more things, that type of a thing.
So along those lines, I understand we offer breakfast and programs that are not universal programs. I mean, that, these are not the only buildings that have breakfast.
Right. We have, right now, right now, we have universal breakfast at Alexander Wood, Kirkwood, Twain, and Wood.
But then we also offer, it's not universal, but we have breakfast served at a number of other schools.
We do, and those are just strictly based on whether you're a free student, reduced student, or full-paid student, right? And, and so that requires a specific student-by-student accounting, and it's not quite as universal as a CEP or universal program, right?
One opportunity that I, I would see with that would be potentially if we went with the shuttle model, as the kids that lived closer and have the qualification for the breakfast could get breakfast at one of the buildings
Mm-hmm.
and then hop on the shuttle. could get breakfast at one of the buildings, and then hop on the shuttle to go to the other building.
As possible.
It wouldn't hit everyone, but it could hit at least some of the kids.
But I think, in talking with one of the building principals that have a universal breakfast, the stigma is not there.
It's not there.
Because all kids aren't eating.
Right.
Then we would reintroduce that stigma that could then have an impact on a child's learning for later that day, because it's, oh yeah, that's the breakfast kids going into the building right now.
Yeah.
And who knows if they would actually go because of that stigma? So that's just a consideration for me.
Well, there was an article in the Gazette about Cedar Rapids Schools providing free meals. It wasn't, it was, they listed the ones, I guess, that...
I need to go back and reread that article, but yeah.
Yeah, it was like fifteen schools. I saw that, too, that they went to a program.
That's a valid, that's a valid point. When you can do it, when you can do it for everybody, it's a...
Right.
Now, I do know that, for example, at my daughter's school, there are kids who eat breakfast that pay for it. So it's not just all free and reduced lunch kids eating it.
Oh, yeah, no, we have a lot of paid, paid kids that eat breakfast by this room, absolutely.
What do you consider in a two-story building? Is there a number of steps? Because it's, they do have an upper level and a lower level, but it's...
Yeah. I'd have to look at that, I'd have to look at the fire code in order to answer your question, Paul. I just don't know.
Yeah, or is it one on top of the other, or is it...
Yeah, right.
They do have two classrooms that are, have two others.
Has a small section that's two-story as well, and that, so.
Yeah. You know, some of your, some of our older buildings, they have as many as seven, eight levels. You go up two steps, and you go down, you know?
The kind that's above grade?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking it is. It's steps above grade might be where it's at with the fire code. It's about exit. It's all about exit. So I believe, I believe it's grade level.
So you're saying, as long as you can exit the building without going downstairs?
Onto the ground.
Well, Twain would not be that.
Yeah, right.
You have the two, the two classrooms on the end by the parking lot that may be far enough above grade, the steps down, that they may not qualify. Now, they may, there may be some variation for that if your building is completely sprinkled with a fire suppression system as well. So, you know, we'd really have to dig into that.
Sure.
But I just wanted to bring it up as a potential issue for you.
I mean, you know, what I see, obviously, facilities are super important questions and fire code and all that. But when I'm looking at the big dollar amounts here, Title One isn't, won't be affected from a...
Roughly two-point-three million dollars, but I don't think it'll be affected a lot, no.
I mean, that, we decide how to allocate it, anyway. I get the free breakfast stigma. I do get that. I mean, we have that right now, you know, stigma with kids who come from certain schools. And then you go to high school, and those are the kids from that school. And people know who they are, and, and that's an important consideration. At-risk grants, a hundred grand a year?
That's per school.
Per building.
Per building.
Yeah, so that's a little more than a teacher. And if we can get it...
But it's all after school, for the most part?
No, I know, but I'm just...
An extra service that exists, like...
I know, but if I'm thinking of the big picture, and right now with RAM, we're spending twenty-eight teachers on RAM, then money like this is not, you know what I'm saying? If we can, if we can save ten teachers by lowering RAM and getting rid of some RAM, that's three-quarters of a million dollars every single year, right? And so, RAM is great, and I, and I think that, you know, as we kind of keep talking about this and move forward, we want to be really careful about not too many disruptions. So if we do pair schools, you know, we mentioned, and it's been said before, we, you know, maybe keep that RAM model and to ease that transition, right, for both schools, which makes it much better for the school that's, FRL is coming up, and then doesn't, is not as disruptive for that school, FRL coming down. I think the truth is, the federal government has been throwing resources at these problems for many decades, and it's done exactly nothing. It has not moved our educational data any, any. Since we've been keeping track, since No Child Left Behind on gaps, all of these resources haven't moved the needle. So it's not working for what we want it to do, which is to make sure every one of our kids gets educated. It makes sure some of our kids get educated, some of our kids get a world-class education, and some don't. And that's the part that's not fair. And cost is really important. These costs and these facilities changes, playgrounds are an important consideration, that's one time, right? And so comparing that to paying twenty-eight teachers over twenty-year careers, you're talking about millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars, when we don't want to have to use those resources. Right now, we have to, just to give some kids kind of a chance, just to get those staffs through the year, we have to really have a huge discrepancy in our class sizes. That's not fair either. You know, that's not fair for somebody who's, you know, looking at a class of twenty-eight, thirty kids, you know, when they know over here, there's fifteen. And so I think, to me, that kind of gets at it. You know, all resources, I haven't seen a model where throwing more resources at these issues work to move the needle for education, for test scores, for outcomes. You know, I looked at Madison today, just because it's a very similar community to Iowa City, and they have three different pairings, and their maps are all over the place. They have kids going island here, going way over here to this school. And so I know this is not like a crazy idea. You know, I think that when we look at college towns, and we understand college towns tend to be very economically segregated, that's the issue we've got. And it will be, it would be the easiest thing in the world to just let that be. Because oftentimes, families who are homeless, and families who are moving in from out of town don't have the resources in the agency to show up to the PTO meeting and like get things done for their school. I think sharing PTOs is one of the best things we can get out of this, sharing that energy. You know, I go to a school, it's so hard to get parents there. A lot of them just don't speak English. And if you speak French and you show up to a PTO meeting, you don't have any clue what's going on, you know? And translators help, but we're probably not going to hire three translators, you know, and just cover those languages for every one. I looked at this, there are PTO dues? I'm not at a school where we have PTO dues. We're just begging you to show up, you know, because we want people to be involved. We know that it makes a difference. I mean, this is how, you know, we integrate a community. And, and the budget's going to be tight, and it's going to come up and out again, and not be so tight. And I would rather spend the money on this one-time facilities changes than forever spend them. I mean, I don't think people quite always, I mean, I'm toot my horn that I helped get teacher salaries where they are, and now I'm on the end. Where I see what that does, right? I mean, I understand how expensive teachers are. They're worth every penny of it. But if over the years, we can save twenty-eight of them, that's about two and a half million dollars of taxpayer money every single year that we don't need to spend, because the model is actually working better for kids, would be the hope.
Well, the budget page I skipped over would agree completely with your assessment.
Well, because that's where the money is, is staffing. I mean, compared to staffing, everything else is literally pennies on the dollar, so...
The four cents out of every dollar we spend goes to somebody.
Yep. Which is good and as it should be. So if we can find savings in staffing, that's the only way we're going to ever be able to really deal with shortfalls from the state and the feds, is to look at our staffing and, and make...
Now, Adam had a component to this that I didn't get in my major presentation that he would like to go through as far as part of your operational piece as well. So when you want to hear from Adam, and then that kind of will wrap up our, our piece of it, so.
One other thing, Craig, if I could add, we kind of looked at this as the impact on the schools that would be paired, but we didn't look at it to see if there'd be impact, positive, negative, on non-paired schools. So I think that's probably a consideration, as your role is, is to look at the whole district. You have two schools, and there may be a strong benefit. Is there, that benefit spread to the other eighteen elementaries, or do they get harmed? And we haven't went into that analysis, but that, but there is that piece of it. We kind of looked at the impact on the paired schools, and what that might do specifically to those that have some of those resources tied to them. So I just wanted to keep that whole picture out there.
Thanks.
All right, my slide will be short and sweet. It's the other slide on this agenda item. And based on the fire code conversation, you can probably eliminate three of these columns, most likely, with the two-story buildings being K-two. But essentially, what this is showing you is how many transitions groups of students would go through under each pairing scenario. So for instance, the first pairing scenario, Longfellow-Twain, those students who currently live in the Longfellow zone, that's the twenty-eighteen Longfellow on the left, students who are in grades two through five, assuming Twain is the K-two building, would have zero transitions. That's one hundred and thirty-one current live-in students. Students who are in grades K-one, on the other hand, would have two transitions. They would have the first transition to Twain for a year or two, and then they would have the transition back to Longfellow. And then straight down the line, similar with Twain, again, using that second Twain-K-two scenario, all students who are currently in the Twain attendance zone would have one transition. They would, so that's one hundred and eighty-two students, I believe. And then there's also a portion of current Southwest Hoover that feeds into that, actually, the Longfellow attendance zone. Again, that's how the students would be affected. This is, again, it's not really a positive or negative at all. This is just basic information. Same thing presented for the Man-Shimick pairing, the current zone that they're in on the left, and then how many transitions they would have if Shimick is the K-two building over in that if-Shimick-K-two column, and the number of affected students. So there you can see, again, the zero effect would be twenty-eighteen Man attendance zone for grades two through five. And then a series of ones and twos down the Kirkwood-Borlog pairing. Assuming Kirkwood was your K-two building, then students who are twenty-eighteen Borlog attendance zone, grades two through five would be the ones, that's two hundred and forty-six kids who would have zero transitions. One note, just in case anyone wonders, two forty-six is identical for two through five at Kirkwood and Borlog. That is correct, but it's not a typo. So just to be aware of that. But any questions about this slide?
Well, if our, our goal is to, I think there's going to be transition affected students, no matter how we go with this thing, if it's our goal, right? Because it's either a boundary change that creates a change, or a pairing that creates a change, so. It's, and, and I didn't mean that to come out like this, this isn't pertinent, but it's important to know. But I think to a certain extent, it's a wash, because we're going to, we're going to have it, if that's our goal before we can attack this thing, it's either going to be on the pairing changes, or it's going to be on the boundary changes. So I think there's, there's going to be students affected.
And a number of these students would, will have, if the current twenty-nineteen boundaries remain unchanged, a number of the students in this table would have at least, would have a transition anyway. The pairing creates potential for the double transition, right?
And at least with this kind of transition, you're moving buildings, but you're with the same kids.
Right, all their classmates are moving.
That's, that's, that's the one thing. And in fact, you're increasing your friends, because you're going from your one group, and now it's a larger group of potential, potential friends, depending on how...
All right, are there any more questions on operational things?
I'm going to come off sounding like a kind of a jerk. I mean, the presentation that, you know, you just gave, Craig, it's all the questions that we've already set are things that we need to keep in mind and talk about, right? I mean, I don't think any of it's novel that was in there. I think what we'd be really looking for is some of those real tangible things, like knowing, is Twain considered two stories or not two stories? Knowing what would the cost be to turn a kindergarten classroom, you know, use that space a little bit better to turn it into something else, right? I think we need some, some tangible stuff, and maybe we need to come up with a good list to pass your way to do that. But I, I feel like, you know, a lot of those things you brought to the service are very valid points, but I think they've been valid points, and we're trying to come up with the answers to the questions, and not keep asking the questions. So I think maybe we need to do that work, to come up with a real finite list. Okay, what is the number that this will be? And I think we should probably do that sooner than later, to have something to work with.
Crazy fact, probably one thing they're waiting for us to say is what exactly we want. And to look at, I mean, to have four scenarios on there, we maybe really want to know one right now and go from there, or whatever, you know, that's probably more or less what I think.
Yeah, and I think that's on us to really determine what numbers we need from...
Well, the fire code stuff is really, that's, you know, those things are harder to change. I mean, we can't make Longfellow a one-story building.
Right, but it'd be important to know if Twain is considered also a two-story building.
Parts of it, and how, and how that. Because some of those, again, if it's approved, if it's, obviously, if it's safe, and if the fire marshal says this sprinkler system, again, upfront cost, but a one-time cost. And so I think we need to know what those numbers are. And then I'm really interested in talking to Durham about how we, because, yeah, we cannot expect people to be in two places at the same time. That also is not possible. So we have to figure out what that looks like, and it's probably got to be some version of split start time, shuttle, drop off, something like that. And those are the details, I think, as we start to drill down and see. So we can get some real numbers to them, and know what budget impact this is going to have.
And as I hold up the, I don't know what year these were made, do you remember, Steve? These are the...
Two thousand fifteen?
Okay, these are maps of two miles from Twain and Longfellow. There's just a very tiny area on either side, far end, that doesn't overlap with both.
We just did two-mile drive routes, so I've got them posted in the draft September eleventh work session, so we'll have those for you.
Okay, what I was going to suggest is maybe if you could put these maps on top of each other, so that...
We were struggling with...
Maybe color in one purple or something, the combined area that's two miles from both schools, and then the area that's not two miles from the other, you know, what I mean?
Yeah, so we have how many kids we're talking about, who even... Well, that's why we pick schools that are close together, because you do have so much over there.
Are you guys operationally looking to us to tell you what we think the solutions should be?
Yeah, I guess I stand ready to, you know, if you wanted to give me the parameters, we could certainly, costing your proposal that you wanted to come up with. I, I don't think it's probably something that we can outguess what you, as a board, want to do, or come up with the scenarios, because I can come up with four scenarios, and you think number five is the way we ought to go. So if you want to give me some directions, I can certainly work on putting some numbers to that kind of stuff. So, yeah, I would, yeah, your direction would be welcome.
And I would guess it'd be a benefit in the iterative process, so if you say, hey, we'd like it to look like this, we'll start working on it, and then we may discover that we can't finish the costing model unless we get answers to questions.
Right, there's going to be certain inputs that we might have to come back to say... To make some decisions on, yeah.
We'll hear from the principals and teachers and BASP's next meeting, so that would be helpful from the VASP perspective. That's a very key component in this. I hear what you're saying about the differences. I guess I always envisioned, as I thought about this, that the child would go back to their home school for their BASP, so their parent is only dropping kids off at one school. And this, BASP's are both K through six. But, you know, maybe that's not the way we want to do it, I don't know. That's a discussion we need to have.
I think that, I mean, I like the sound of that, I like to see how it costs, because if you're, you know, because then on either end, if you're someone who does BASP, both times you're dropping, picking off one spot. And I think that's just much more perfect.
So are we... So, are we okay with hearing from our staff next time, and then moving ahead with giving them direction? What's our next-
I think we should go through the rest of the process that we have before we decide on what to focus their energies on, because that's, that's the time limit, especially the stuff that we just approved, great to do, at the one, the last meeting, so, I really wanna make sure we're dialed in before we get the work to do, I think.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking as well. Would, what, we're hearing from the staff next time, we're hearing from HR.
I'm gonna try to channel Chase till he gets here.
So, what other pieces do we need to hear before we can dial it in for them with operational decisions? Or give them scenarios?
Would it help if the operations team and the education team came up with a list of questions for you to answer after hearing from the parents? So that we have as many of our unknowns known, in terms of, do you want BASP at each school for K6? Do you want a staggered start time? Do you want, we could put together a series of questions that we need to fill in, to build out a model, and then we can bring those to you, and that way, you can try to answer all those questions for us, so that as we're modeling it, we're not having to come back to you. You know, I think about the conversation we had with the ed team when they were here last time. I'm sure there's some Title I questions, and the LL and Sped questions, that we would like to get out on the table, and if, if you're able to go through as a board and answer all those, I think we could come to a draft model much quicker. We'll probably still have some questions to have to come back to you with, that are gonna just bubble up as we go through that modeling process, but I think we'd be a lot closer to a finished product if we had kind of a list of questions that you were able, collectively as a group, when you're together, sitting around the table, to answer.
And many of those were contained in this.
Right.
Absolutely.
And we'll get more of those next week, from the parent-
Yes, exactly.
From the teachers, from the principals, and the BASP's. What else do we need to get this to a point of being able to give them direction?
Well, I mean, the law doesn't change once you hit third grade, as far as walk, school walking, right?
No.
It's just in elementary time.
Right.
But, I think probably most people feel a lot differently about their kindergarten or walk-in than their fifth grader. And so, just being mindful kind of of that, that, you know, whatever schools we designate as K2, being mindful of that, even though the law says X number of miles, being sensitive to the fact that truly, that's probably not happening for those younger kids. The law says everybody south of Highway 6 is gonna walk to City High 2.9 miles, but that doesn't happen very often. So, just being mindful of, of that, as we think about it.
Will we have what we need to make that list that Steve has suggested after our next work session? Or are there additional pieces of information we want to bring into this?
I mean, have the next work session, it's next week, right?
It is, it is.
Okay, yeah. I wanna plan ahead, though, I mean, think further than-
I didn't do, I don't hear what they have to say, I don't feel comfortable.
I'm not saying we, no, we're not making a decision, we're, I'm saying, can we formulate the list? Are there, are there other pieces we need to add?
Well, I think we can start with the questions, so we can start that tomorrow.
Oh, I thought you wanted us to come up with, oh, no, you were gonna come up with-
We'll come up with questions.
Okay.
There may be more things, though, that, as you think about what it might look like, that are gonna require us to ask additional questions of you, so that we can help kind of corral that idea, so that we've got enough of the variables known, that we could start looking at it from a cost perspective. Are we gonna need data bus route? Do we need to, you know, what kinds of things do we need to think about doing, based on, like you said, some of the stuff that's up here on the screen right now? Well, we'll start working on a draft list, and after we get it as complete as possible, we'll probably work on routing it around to you for feedback, and then try to get that refined, so that after we get through the input from our staff and group next week, that we've got, hopefully, whatever lack of clarity we have prior to that, we can get it wrapped up then.
So, following that meeting, we could then get to that point, is what I'm getting at?
Then we can start modeling.
Yeah, okay. So, that would potentially be-
So, we've got a-
The end of September.
Yeah, we've got a work session on the 18th, which we don't have populated yet, so we held that, so that's sitting out there as an option for us, if there are things that come up, you ask, what else might we need to know? So, there might be things that surface in the conversations with staff next week, that you ask us for additional information, and then whether it's education or operation, we can bring that information back to you on the 18th.
Okay, all right.
I didn't have to channel you at all. You're up, no.
Chase!
Turn.
Oh, it's my turn, that's what I was saying.
Impeccable timing!
I left something in my car.
Impeccable timing. So, we've got, I think, some answers there, process-wise, for operations. I do think we should plan on the 18th, and I do think that's a good idea, to have that list that we could start working on then. Let's go on to human resources.
Sure. So, a couple of documents that, you know-
You want the RAM first?
Sure.
Okay.
So, it's hard to see, right? But it's, it's the RAM, and it's just really for more talking point purposes, to give you an idea of where we are in terms of our staffing right now, at the three different levels, and the totals of, by using the RAM, the staffing that we provided every one of the schools, what we've done in the total, and knowing that there's about 28 positions that are allocated through the use of the RAM, that wouldn't otherwise be allocated to the schools. We just give that as, as painting the entire picture of how our staffing has changed. I think that's important to know, because as we go to paired schools, one of the things that we're going to see, as we look at our staffing, is where schools fall into the RAM changing, and so it shifts that staffing piece, and we know it's critical, and we work with our friends in finance on the budget, because our personnel is our heaviest lift when it comes to financial responsibilities. And so, as we look at this, where we are today with the RAM, knowing that those 28 positions that otherwise would not be generated are, are provided. So, if we go to the other document, and we look more closely, at what would happen when we pair those schools, you see the different pairings that we have, we look at Kirkwood and Wickham on, on the first, the first row, the second row being a Twain and Longfellow pairing, and the third row being a Man and Lincoln pairing, and the last row being a Man and Shimick pairing. Out to the right, at the far right, at the end of each one of those rows, we've shown you where we would project the staffing, being the number of teachers with each one of those pairs. Now, you can't just add those numbers up on the far right to get overall savings, because of course, we use a couple of the schools more than once, to give you some ideas. But, what we can extrapolate from this, that even for schools that aren't on there, that we, there would be a savings in terms of FTE to some level if we paired. Depending on the schools that we paired, would then generate how those savings would, would play out, the number of FTEs. And so, we can't, I mean, we can go through, anytime we pair two schools, we can run those numbers to give what those savings are, but it's not a standard savings every time we pair a school, it's really dependent on the number of students, and how those, and how they are slotted to go to different schools. So, right now, that's really kind of the information we have, is you see, again, where we are in terms of staffing, utilizing the RAM model, and then utilizing the RAM as we pair schools, these schools where they would fall into different categories of the RAM, and by that, the staffing savings that would be generated from them. So, just the observation wise, for me, when I, when I look at some of these, and we're going, and we are talking about not using RAM, I think JP and I have kinda said, we may need to use RAM still, because a lot of these classes go up, even though you're saving a teacher, like, you're coming from Mark Twain, having 18 kids in a kindergarten, and Longfellow having 20 kids, and now you combined have 23 kids, that's a big change. It is, it is a big change, but one of the things, I think the RAM, what RAM lets us do, right, is we look at individual schools, but we also look at schools that have similar student bodies, as, as ones that are in that same group, right? And so, when they might have gone up, that's one of the things that's impacted the RAM, or the results of the RAM, and so, I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, if you change it for that school, based on the pairing, you're going to put those students in those schools in a different position than schools that have similar demographics, other areas of the school district. And so, I think that would be one of the considerations, is if we're not going to use the RAM as it's developed, once the schools are paired, what does that do to other schools in terms of equity, from a staffing perspective, that aren't paired, that have similar, similar demographics?
You know, I think, my thought is, not that we would continue indefinitely, but have some finite transition period-
Sure.
Because this is new, this would be very new for the community, this is definitely gonna take some getting used to, and that may be one way to ease that transition, is temporarily to have-
We'd wanna-
Some modified RAM or something.
And just be clear on that, that we're doing it for-
We're phasing it for this many-
Right, I think that's what we wanna do, I don't think it's impossible, we just need to make sure that we're clear.
Because the whole, I mean, what we're trying to do is that then, that you, we pair these schools, so the need isn't there, that the requirement for the resources aren't there. I mean, that's why we have RAM, we need resources, and we don't wanna have to do this, you know, it'd be nice to not have to do that.
I guess I'm just saying, I think, even if the schools are on the, lending RAM, I guess, that have larger class sizes, like, that's not ideal either, for us in our district, and we're not looking for it. So, just to look on this and see that we're gonna have, that there's possibility to have classrooms with 29 to 30 kids, like, even if you're mixing them with other kids, it's not ideal to have 30 kids in a classroom.
No.
Yeah.
Never.
And I look on, on the sheet, the Wickham-Kirkwood match, I think this is too big, and I'm just going from me, you're, you're creating a large school, and I think some of the numbers coming out of Wickham are, are, I, I, I'm concerned that they're not, they're not gonna trend that way in the future, but I think that pairing makes it too large, and I think with Kirkwood, we'll talk about our, you know, pairing isn't the only thing that we're gonna use. I think Kirkwood redistricting, we could redistrict some, some of Kirkwood and solve some of the issues there. The Twain-Longfellow, I think that's, that's, that's worth continuing, looking at everything. The, the Man-Lincoln, I have concerns with that one, because those two are 2.1 miles apart, and it's not easy traversing a river and everything like that. But, you know, when you look at the Man-Shimick, I think there's real benefit, and, and for me, when you pair two small schools, it's the, that's the, that's the sweet spot. That's when you take the operational efficiencies that we discussed in the past, of smaller schools, and you can correct a little bit of that. And, believe me, I will accept a certain amount of inefficiency, as long as the product is great, you know, some of our small schools are terrific product, but we're looking to correct it for everybody. So, I, I think that the, the Man-Shimick is very good, they're just 1.1 mile away, and to what, you know, Lori, what you were saying about with the Longfellow-Twain, you know, they're so close, that's, that's another good one, that, you know, that we should have it. And I'm concerned, too, with the Kirkwood-Wickham one, that the transportation costs are gonna be, when we look, start really looking at that one, the transportation costs are gonna offset whatever other efficiencies we might gain. And, you know, to your, to your point, JP, on saving staff and everything that way, you know, you look at the elementary level, that's one thing, but when you look at the high school level, three teachers, the high school level, since 18 sections, and that's significant. So, you know, I'm, I'm very interested in, in these pairings, where we have those, those efficiencies, and then, so we can help in those things. But I, I think the Man, the Man-Shimick is a, is a, for sure, and, and these others, but the Kirkwood-Wickham, I've got real concerns to spend much time on that one, because I think that that's just gonna be too darn difficult. And the community has, has weighed in very strongly when that discussion was there, and they're not interested in large elementary schools.
I guess it's just the way you look at it, too, because I think you're looking at a whole number, I would see it as two schools, one has 30 students, and the other has 160.
Chase, are these current boundary numbers?
Yeah, these, these were uploaded, this was a July 10th at our work session, this was data that I just pulled off that July 10th work session.
So, these FRLs are not the 2019 changes?
Right.
Which means most, I think, Man is the one that's most impacted by that, in this scenario, and Lincoln.
Yep.
And Chase, just to go on record, this savings on FTE does not mean we fire teachers, they're saved through attrition.
Thank you, that's, so you beat me to it.
Okay.
Now, it's not gonna answer your question, not advocating, but no, that was gonna be one of my points, is the thing that I think, from my seat, and my voice at table, why I can support something like this for the savings, because we can do it through attrition. We're not going to lose any teachers, we wouldn't have to force any teachers out, averaging 100 hires over the last five years, 100 hires a year the last five years. If we could save 10 or 15 teachers, we would do that through attrition, it would not cost anyone their jobs.
And would it be similar attrition by grade ties? Because, I mean, we know we have teachers that say have only taught K through second, maybe. Now, I mean, is it similar, do you know what I'm asking?
I, I do know what you're asking.
Okay.
And, that's a harder question to answer, just because it depends on where the kids fall in a certain year, when we, we would do the merger, it also depends, you know, just section. And we, and we face that challenge every year, in terms of where we need to move a teacher, and so, we try to do our best, we would do our best to keep them in the same grade level. But, yes, there could, it could mean that we have to have an additional section at fourth grade, and one less at third grade, and so a teacher might have to bounce between the two grade levels. That's a little bit more difficult to, to map out.
Particularly, bouncing between grade levels, bounces you between buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah. What's, for some, for sure, right? Because you're taking all the grade levels out of-
Well, yeah.
So, you would have to-
Still half.
But as a flex, it's year to year, I mean, I know Garner struggled with that forever, right? Somebody moved from second to third, and then the next year, they're back at second, and then maybe they're at fourth, and-
Yeah.
Wish that, yeah.
Doing that motion all within the confines of the school, at the very least, but another wrinkle.
So, well, we can say that discussion, we have the principals and the students here at Longfellow.
Other than teachers, are there other HR considerations?
We've just really looked at the, the teachers right now, and I wasn't here to view some of the other facilities' presentations, so I don't know if we went into that, but I mean, there, we could look at some efficiencies through that, but in terms of the staffing, I mean, you're still operating both buildings, and you're still serving lunch in both buildings, both buildings still need to be cleaned, and so, as we look at really from that aspect, your largest, if you're looking for savings from staffing, is going to come from teachers, because they're our largest group of the workforce, and so that's where it would be. We would obviously look at other considerations, and we were talking a little bit about moving back and forth between buildings. It's different than movement inside of a school, in terms of transfer, and who has rights to transfer, and not transfer, and so we would wanna make sure that we were very clear and transparent on what rules were gonna be in place on those. You know, we've done that before, we've looked at, kind of, when we open new buildings, looked at those as specific circumstances, and do we need to do something in agreement, of course, with the associations, that might be a little different than our standard practice. So, if we went down this path, we would look at those processes in place, and do it, you know, we talked about families needing enough notice, but our teachers need enough notice as well, and other staff members, and if we're going to change where they work, they need to know that, and they need to have some lead time. have some lead time because it's important, right? We want people to be happy in their jobs and happy where they're working. And so giving them that fair amount of notice of those changes, I think, is important to the process.
So will this create more travel between buildings for like our art, music, and PE based on the number of, sort of, I mean, based on these numbers, if looks, which sections? I'm just curious. Or, not sure.
The special, the, the, the special schedule is one that we're always trying to improve. And I don't know off the top, off the top.
Well, they did, didn't they bring that up? Maybe, didn't they bring that up?
If we reduce the number of sections, then it would reduce the number of...
Yeah, but different, different grade levels, right? We, and then we get different amounts of specials. And so that's what I, that's where the math gets more complicated, is because you're getting more sections of PE, and you have all those grade level, you know, more classes in the same building, teacher can't teach in all the sections, right? And so that's what we would have to really try to work through is, is what would that look like?
There's a sweet spot in there, and so what's the number of PE sections that you have to teach PE to? I mean, it might work out, but it depends on which scenario you draw forward, and it might not work out when you do it area. If it works for PE, it's not necessarily the problem.
But at the elementary level, I mean, those are our teachers that really would be impacted as much or more than the classroom teachers on a change like this. Because if you're used to seeing five different grade levels in a day, and you go to only seeing two grade levels, that, that really changes the way you approach your day. And so, I mean, I think that is a consideration that we, we need to make sure that we're conscious of.
You just leave the gym, gym cards out for the fifth and sixth graders.
So something that I would add to the list of questions would be supervision needs and how that's impacted with potential changes in start time. I think that while this is a reduction, there could be an increase in, you know, for example...
Sure.
So Chase, what I'm referring to is if you had a shuttle going back and forth between schools, you would have kids waiting at one school while the other kids are driven to the other school, so you'd have some supervision time there. What we've, what I've heard is that that would be a para. I don't know that we've actually worked that out, but there would be potentially some increase there of staff, possibly.
Before you got here, one of the things we mentioned is we're going to try to get as comprehensive a list of what-if questions for the board to answer, so that they can say, okay, what if we've got an E for morning supervision because we've got a staggered bus time, what if? So that way we can actually work out, draw a model up for them, and then try to do some costing. Just this chart, when you just compared these two pairings, how hard is it to throw any given pairing into the...
Pretty straightforward.
Is that for sure? Because if we saw what Kirkwood Borlaug would look like, I don't know about that.
Yeah.
But I don't, again, I don't, you know. To me, it's the con, you're just seeing the red in the, you know, the staffing projections. It's a picture. They're pretty straightforward to look at, especially as we get closer to October 1st, we're going to have certain enrollment date for data for this year, which helps. And then through Guide K-12, we'll have that live-in data, so it gets to be a little bit more concrete as we cast forward. So the closer we get to October 1st, then we'll start rolling from maybe using last year's data set to using this year's data set, which I think helps us out. And then I think, moving forward, as we tackle as a board voluntary transfer and the tweaks that we've got going, and then see what those do to our overall 19 numbers... Then we can start looking at live-in numbers. And we'll get, everything will get a lot more accurate as we... Yes, absolutely.
Is there anything to add to this, to this discussion before we move on?
Well, just on kind of the general pairing and our goals for that, I see everyone, most everyone's voted or will vote today if they're in the Iowa City area. Being at the forum on Wednesday, all the candidates were tall team density of the city. The city is going to get more dense, it's going up. And in fact, a candidate berated the school board and the district for spurring sprawl in our community, putting schools on the periphery to spur, spur that. So I, I just want to make sure everyone's aware that the city sees itself as getting more dense in the center, and that facilities that we have in the inner city are going to become very important and very crucial.
Phil, did they mention how many families live in those?
Well, it's, it's units. It may be students today, it may be retirees at one point, and it may be young families.
Because I, because, and I understand that argument, and I frankly agree with it. I don't, I mean, but now that I'm on the board, and I see we have to build schools where kids live, and we don't get to pick where they live, I don't know how many kids live. I'd love to see us have a facility downtown Iowa City. I don't know that we have kids who would build it, but I don't know if that's...
Were we happily in the movie camp?
Well, and then there's buying land.
We buy land that's in, in the dense area, it's much more expensive, as we saw in North Liberty.
But, I mean, I just, you know, because...
I'm just, I'm conveying information that was presented at a public forum with elected officials that were actions tonight, will indicate whether they look forward and become the new voice for our community.
I appreciate that perspective.
All right, so if anybody, if nobody has anything else to add to that? No? Okay, we'll move on to the community meeting schedule. So I am wondering if we could just sort of cover the meetings that have happened already, if the people that were there could give a little summary of how the meeting went? I don't know that we've done that yet. Some of them, I guess we've heard, we've heard some of these, Equity Committee and...
Let's go.
Okay, yeah, that's...
Get the ball rolling. Couple different ones. I got this lovely little thank you card from the North Liberty Optimists, and I, I never felt like I needed reading glasses before today, but I'm going to try and read it to you because I think it was important. On behalf of the North Liberty Optimists, we want to thank you for speaking at our meeting last week. The ICCSD's attendance area development contains some very interesting and innovative plans for our schools. I was surprised that our schools are 57% white, but really amazed that there are 80 languages spoken. What a challenge. That is true, that is a challenge. The plan includes investigating, let's see, integrating our schools the best way possible as diversity is good for everybody, and one way to do that is pairing schools. You have a lot of work ahead of you, and we extend our best wishes for your success. So that was a nice positive from...
Optimistic note from them.
The optimist.
After the two that I did that Rod Sullivan was at, he mentioned to me both times, and I think he's mentioned it to JP a couple times, that he thinks that something that may help is to have a group of people, you know, as your messengers, I guess, to go out and try and raise awareness of it. I think that the question surrounding that is, is that a, around the why or around the what? Because I think we're sort of, have kind of made that transition, and as we've gone through some of these different meetings, and, you know, they've taken place over like a, I don't know, six-week span, eight-week span, something like that, you know, we've done more work and more information has come out, so I think there sort of has been this transition. I think that I try and really still do the presentations from the why aspect, and I think that was the sole purpose of some of these community groups. I'm going to say community as opposed to just like parents and stuff, because that was the intent, right? It wasn't to start asking parents, what do you think about things, right? Because that's kind of putting the cart before the horse. I think it was really to inform a larger populace as to why we're trying to do anything, really, not so much what we're trying to do. So I think as I've done my presentations, I think leading with, we're going to talk about the why, I think has made it, I don't know, a little more accepted amongst the folks that are listening. But there's definitely that, that waiting for that next step, okay, that sounds great, what is it going to be? And that's, you know, not unexpected, but I, I think we're kind of at that tipping point where people are expecting us to have those concrete answers as to what exactly we're doing, and we're just not there yet. And I, and I think it's important that we don't, we aren't putting out misinformation that this plan is the plan, so everybody can weigh in on that plan. I think there's definitely ways that we're leaning, and we have some ideas that have kind of floated to the surface that kind of seem to work a little bit better than others. And I think we need to make sure that that's clear, and I don't think that's been done very well, right, last two, you know, what tangible things have happened and what hasn't happened. And I think that kind of comes up with some of the questions that people have at some of the meetings. I would say kind of overall, they've been very positive. I think, at least the ones I have done, I think most folks in the room, I would consider to be allies for the most part in the process. So I think that's a good thing.
Sorry, you...
Go ahead.
I'm just curious, and based on some of the emails we've been getting, especially one today, the concern, I think, although we know what these meetings are, the community aren't quite sure. As a parent, if I logged on to the board docs and just saw this, I think I would have some of the same questions. Well, why, why City High PTO isn't on here? Why Lucas PTO isn't on here? And maybe if we put a blurb at the top of these, that would help notify parents looking at this, that we're not trying to operate in a manner that's not transparent, or that's not reaching out to schools that could be impacted by any of these plans we're looking at. Right now, we're doing a specific piece on the why, and we're going around talking with groups on this is why, where we're still planning on doing the other leg of it by going into schools, and not only talking about this is why we brought this up again, and this is what we're planning on doing, or the two plans that have flowed up to the top. I, because I think that would help ease some of the concern that we're hearing from people, the angst that we're sort of not intending to cause, but we have caused.
Yeah, we can do that.
Well, and to that point, frankly, and Sean, Rod doesn't just say we should have it, he volunteers to be on it and be a part of it, right? That, you know, we're seven people. He can only go to so many PTO, I mean, just logistically, right? So that's where people like Rod and other people who kind of understand these issues on a pretty deep level are help the ambassadors to explain kind of the why. And I think that would help to have a group of folks, you know, you know, like the Bond Committee, but, but who are, who care about equity issues, and are really concerned about racial justice, and really have some of those kinds of things that have informed the why of this. And I think that would be nice to put together, just to have help, just frank help getting the word out. But the more we can do, Peach Jar or whatever it is, to just say, you know, we're in this sort of why phase, we're trying... I mean, I have had the experience of people being really shocked that, of looking at the stats and saying, I had no idea that we had so many minority folks. I had no idea so many languages were spoken. I had no idea that we have schools that are vastly different for instance, lunch numbers so close together, and why is that even there? Why, you know, so some people, I mean, for the most part, you know, I mean, people go to their school, they know that really well, and we don't necessarily know what's going on on the other side of town. And we are looking at this from this huge 30,000-foot view, and we're not just doing this for people. I mean, right now, if I'm a parent, I care about my kid in her school right now, for the time she's in that school. Well, as a board, we're looking at this for setting precedent for the future, we're, we're looking at board goals that were established 10 years ago, and we're following through on those. You know, to get our schools within, to 50% or within the district average, that's been a board goal through six different campaigns, you know, six elections maybe, I don't know, but a long time. And things have been tried, and in the past, this level of disruption hasn't gone through, usually because people who are very concerned with what's happening, you know, don't change my kid's experience right now. And I understand that on an emotional level, I understand how that causes angst. And I feel as a board member, it's my job to look above that, and to say, and frankly, I know anybody who knows me knows, I ran probably concerned about the kids who have a very disruptive experience right now. And it isn't fair, and I'm, I'm not going to sit by and just say, well, too bad for them. So, but I get how, of course, people are angst. And, and, and the more we can do to communicate what we're doing and the intent, and the, and I think frankly, just get some PTO dates on this list, and try to find some time to...
Just for clarification, I'm not saying that we're not going to make people anxious. I'm saying with these meetings, there's a way to sort of reduce that, where they're feeling as though they're not being involved in the process. I'm, I'm not saying I'm worried about causing anxiety. We're going to, this is a process that will induce that. I just want to clarify with this meeting, not the whole process.
Yeah.
There's a way to reduce that.
Sure.
And that's, actually, I was going to cover that at the end of this conversation, is that I actually think also another thing that would help is if we put some community-wide meetings on the calendar, so that it's known that we are going to do. We do have an intention to have these meetings. We've been sort of alluding to it, but when we don't have it on the calendar, I think people look at this and they think these are their opportunities.
I guess having some clarity as to what that means, though, right? Because we, as I said earlier, we kind of blurred it now, and have kind of moved into a little different area than where it started. Because these were not meetings where we're saying, here's what we want to do, what do you guys think of it? And they pepper us with questions and tell us that the ideas are good or bad or whatever. That's not what's going on at these. But I think it's inevitable that it will become that. I just don't know how far down the road of us figuring out exactly what we're doing we go before we have those. Because...
I think you got a pretty good idea.
I, I think so too.
I would assume a lot of people here are following the Longfellow. If you go to Longfellow and just give them the why, they know that we've been talking about them and the what, then they're not going to want to hear the why, they don't want to ask questions about the why. So until we know, I think, until we get to at least the next meeting, we have a little bit more of those answers, and then the meeting after that where we have answers coming back that we asked, it's tough to do the why.
I think it sounds to me like from the timeline we discussed earlier, that by the end of September, we'll be a little closer.
I think we will.
Now, I don't want to have our meetings the end of September, because I want to be further along than that, but we're, I think we could maybe put some on the calendar for the end of October, November, maybe. And I'm talking about big meetings, not PTO-specific. Those are important as well.
Yeah, I mean, and maybe to speak a little bit to the Neighborhood Center, why that, that meeting couldn't have happened in a big space is we, you know, had a conversation with a woman who didn't speak English. And you have a translator there, but that's, you know, that takes time. And somebody who's not up on boundaries and, you know, so just to be cognizant of that person and, and to have a conversation that's meaningful to them, where they can walk away with good information, you can't do that with 50 people in that room, you know, if, you know, if you had the majority Spanish. But I think to be sensitive, that one thing we're trying to do is really make a point to reach out to people who typically, whose voices have not typically been heard in these discussions. And, and when we do that, I think it's important to be sensitive to that. And that's why, it's not that any of these are off limits, but we have a meeting in Boston Way, because we want to talk to that community that normally doesn't, their voices aren't included in these decisions. And so we're making, trying to make an effort to get out there and include folks who, I, I mean, I'll be honest, I, you know, sometimes I take an Uber now and again. And I have had many experiences where I'd start talking to somebody about schools, and I'll be like, where did your kid go to school? I don't know the name, I mean, they don't, they don't even care, like, these are great schools, I don't know where they go, they go to a great school. And so, but, these decisions affect their life, right? But if you have to go all the way back and say, well, here's the school you go to, and, you know, but we want to be sensitive to that. Not everybody comes in with, you know, an agenda or history or understanding all these things, and I, so that's kind of been my experience with some of these meetings, is it's really taking a step back and trying to not just explain the why of what we're doing, but explain, this is how the school district works, this is why people go to certain places, and this is what diversity even means. Some people, that's a strange, I mean, it's...
Going back to the meetings that have happened, I met with the chamber last, well, two weeks ago, I guess, first day of school, right as school's starting, actually. And that was a meeting with a lot of leaders in the community that I didn't feel like I got a lot of feedback at the meeting, but what's been interesting is that since the meeting, I've gotten individual feedback from various people that have spoken to me about what I discussed at that meeting, all very positive, lots of support for what we're doing. So that's been interesting to hear that from, from those folks.
So is there a fear to be publicly supportive of it?
I think that it's more that it was a morning meeting and they had to get to work, and there wasn't a lot of time, and I also think it's helpful sometimes for people to kind of digest it. And maybe there is an element too, of I don't want to say this in the room with everyone, I don't know.
I mean, it's definitely a different, a different experience depending on what group you're talking to, right? When Laurie and I did the Corvallis Optimists, you know, there was eight people in the room and I was related to half of them. It was a whole different ballgame going to the Affordable Housing Coalition, right? Like, that's people who kind of live in this space, right? And understand it on a much deeper level and want to know how we're trying to affect that, right? That was actually, it was probably the most nerve-wracking going into it, but I appreciated doing it and particularly having the help of, you know, Sarah Barron and what she brought to the table, because she would interject periodically and make the connection for us as to how what we do as a school district affects, you know, their job as a, you know, affordable housing group, right? And how we can help each other and how we could hurt each other, really, if we're not doing things correctly. So that was nice to have, just that other expert voice in the room to further the conversation. It's definitely a different experience than when you're just kind of doing it on your own.
And I just have to say, I haven't been able to see anybody else but Sean do this presentation, and if I had it my way, he would do all of them. It was amazing. I mean, I was just like, somebody should be in here recording this. I mean, he was very engaging.
It's emotion on the table.
He was, it was, it was great. I was just like, why are you here? I mean, he did a very fantastic job, so I was happy to have that fit within my schedule so I could go there and be his wingwoman when he needed it, which he didn't. So it was all good.
I think JP's done the most of them at this point, so he's done a lot of different groups. I don't know that I've seen you actually, I guess we did the Joint Enities, we were there together.
Oh, we're Joint Enities, that was, yeah, that's right. Well, that one, always spoke to that, I mean, I thought that reception was great at Joint Enities, they were really, really supportive.
I think to kind of, the point you made earlier, I think after every single one, at least one person has come up and said that it was eye-opening data.
Yeah.
To show them what our district currently looks like.
Yeah.
And I think that's the point, is that people just don't know what it looks like.
Well, and I think part of that, Steve, is the data you just kind of showed us about the overall FRL in our district is, has gone from, in the past 10 years?
Well, I'm working on putting that together for ELL and Special Ed too, so that we can go a better understand. And I did that from the perspective of that, those are the three key indicators, there's 11 total that we use for the RAM, but those are three of the heaviest ones that, when it comes to that, that whole weighting process, and I think it helps to see that, I mean, it's a doubling of the percentage and a tripling of the numbers.
Tripling of the numbers.
That's suitable for free and reduced lunch, that's an enormous change. That was 99 to 18, so.
Okay.
All right. Do we have any updates on some of these meetings that aren't scheduled yet?
No, we're still going around in circles online, so.
Sunrise Optimists, they meet on Tuesday, Tuesday mornings are kind of tight for me, I just need to go to a meeting and chat with the rest of them this morning, but I'm still working.
Now that school's started, I'll find a time to get ICEA and get up and talk to them.
We have a first leadership meeting on Friday, I'll bring that up.
Bring it up, yeah.
Good.
And I can get, frankly, I'll, whatever they want, if they want to do Exec Board or Rep Council, I can do either of those.
Is there support to putting some dates out there for our larger meetings, like the board has done in the past at the junior highs, when they're very close to an end product?
If, is there, I mean, I don't know, but I imagine that, or maybe this is a terrible idea, but could we have, is there a way that we could do some kind of a forum where we presented, so say it was a big group, but we presented it to small groups and people had opportunities to, maybe we had some discussion, questions or something, I don't, I mean, I don't know, is that something that would be useful, so people could just talk about, if people who are interested want to kind of discuss the whys of things, we could invite maybe people like Rod Sullivan and Sarah Barron who know these issues really well to help facilitate a conversation, or is that too much? I don't know.
In an ideal world?
Okay.
More of us. I like the idea of bringing in some additional folks to help be part of that conversation.
Well, I mean, having a conversation in one place at a certain time, like inviting the, a community-wide or however, I'm not, I mean, that, I mean, that's how it works, you know, I've been involved in the forums where you have maps, and that's exactly what you do, you sit down, you look at the maps, and you talk about it at your table of 12 people. Could we have conversations around, because when people come to me, you know, or the email and they're critical, some people, when I say, well, I'm really glad you're engaged in this, what are your ideas? How would you do it differently? Some people say, I have an idea, and then some people have no more conversation, like it's, for whatever reason, you know, not to judge what it's doing, but some people want to be engaged in this and finding a solution. And I think it's very easy when you have a map and a plan, it's very easy to poke holes and say, this won't work, which is fine, I want people to poke holes in it because I want to know where the holes are. But at the same time, I really appreciate when people say, what if we tried this? I think the hard part, you know, somebody brought it up with Longfellow, they said, well, let's just raise the number of FRL kids at Longfellow. And I said, okay, so who at Longfellow then goes to Twain? And that, nobody says, well, yeah, there's a big chunk of us who think if our neighborhood went, so, you know, because frankly, Wickham and Corvallis Central have, well, Laurie, you live in that neighborhood, where there's a big chunk of what really would be a Wickham neighborhood that is bused to Corvallis Central, which makes Wickham a little, it can't get too much lower FRL, but it doesn't, you know, and then really brings Corvallis Central up, right? If people have those, in the communities have those ideas, I mean, that's, you know, if I sit there and look at maps, I don't know what the XYZ neighborhood on the east side of Iowa City really looks like, and is that, makes sense to move that? And I haven't, and that's why I think, well, Longfellow, Twain, I think that's why pairing works, because then you're not saying, well, okay, if we just draw the boundaries around all the homeless shelters and send them all to Longfellow, we could do that, but then who goes to Twain? Who do you take out of Longfellow to create room? And that's, you know, if I heard that, for people who are like, eh, pairing's not going to work, but I, I mean, I haven't heard that, I don't think we've come up with any building blocks that look like that, I don't think that would, people would support that in that community. I don't think that there would be a group of people who would volunteer to do that, you know? So then we're stuck. Because that, you know, because that, and I'm sort of replaying these conversations in my head, where people have reached out to me, I've had a conversation with them, and then at what point, there's no more, no answer for, well, what if we, okay, what are your ideas? And then, and that's where I don't see, so, so I don't know if a bigger discussion with more heads in the room would come up with some of those ideas.
Well, I think that there's a desire to participate and be involved, and at this point, we haven't provided that.
Opportunity.
Yeah, on a large scale.
Right.
So.
Well, and maybe we don't have to answer that tonight, but I think if we at least get some dates on here, we could, it would help us, I don't know, Phil, what do you think? Crazy?
No, it puts a, starts the fuse.
There you go, lights the fire. I mean, not that we're dragging our feet, right?
Inappropriate term, it puts us on the record.
Before Thanksgiving?
I mean, there's no harm in putting dates on the calendar tonight, if that's what we're discussing, I think we'll have to have a later conversation on what exactly are we discussing? So if we want to plop some dates on the calendar to move this along, let's pull out the calendar, it's a roll date, but I think it's going to be a matter of, as we progress, what exactly are we talking about? So does it have to be tonight that we're plopping dates on the calendar? So that's what I'm saying, I mean, next week, we'll have a more detailed conversation that maybe will help us understand where are we headed? Because I don't think community members, families especially, will be amused by us having these community meetings and going, well, we don't know that, we're talking about this, and we're still looking at this, but you tell me what your ideals are too, so I can add it to this growing list. I think what we're hearing from people, they want us to come in as a board and say, we're headed toward this path, we can talk with you about this path and how that impacts your life. So I'm not sure what's the urgency on setting the dates tonight versus next week. We can think about our calendars, because we all have jobs, come back next week and say, hey, if we have meetings on this night, I can do this and I can do that.
And what I was thinking more is, I'm saying, putting meetings on the calendar, but I was meaning more conceptually, not specifically. Steve and Kim would probably need to look at the school calendar and determine what's, you know, there's band concerts, there's basketball games, there's all kinds of stuff going on, what, what works for the community.
I would recommend in general, if we can aim for Tuesdays in lieu of work sessions, that makes our availability a lot more uniform, because if we have a big meeting, we need more than two board members there, you know? And we can do that, right? We can have more than four at a big forum.
We can have as many as we want, as long as we declare it.
Make it a board meeting.
Make it an open meeting, yeah. So we'll have our conversations next week and the following week, by the end of September, it sounds like we'll be a little closer. If you guys could start thinking of some dates, maybe even put those out to us so we can have a list of the options, then we can start thinking about what works for us. I think that'd be great. Okay. All right. Anything else on this topic before we adjourn? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned.